Moving on to Administrator comments. Administrator would like to progress the poll.
I'll go quick. I have a quick thing on the Ethelville and myself. Blue Devil Design Student Led Business High School recently realized that they needed a little more startup money to get their business up and going so they can turn a profit to sustain it. And the students presented to the Educational Foundation last Tuesday for a little over $20,000. And I'm happy to say that the foundation approved their request. And some of the items were some vinyl and ink to start producing some products such as the tumblers and pint glasses. I'd be very proud of them to do some wine glasses too for presents for Christmas people who are requesting. A basic item was an air compressor that they really do need to run this new CNC chain efficiently. They'd like to get into fabrication with possibly partnering with Moog and Astronics on the road to make little parts for them. And a printer to mass produce some of these items that they're going to be making and then some aluminum to make the tool, the tooling with the tools and we actually have some issues. So we're very grateful and students, it was all students. We wrote down words on paper, but the students had a full presentation to the board and then they, the foundation board, and they showed them around their workspace and gave them a little tour and showed them examples of items that they do make in the next. Thank you to the foundation again.
Well, it was a beautiful presentation. The teachers of administration always do a great job of presenting grants. But in this particular case, there were six students there who took on a leadership role in making the case, you know, in providing a presentation to us and then taking us to the facility that is now demonstrating how it's in use and why they needed particular support for it to happen. You know, we have 11 numbers on our foundation board and to a person, they were blown away by this. You know, it's not easy for them to give away $21,000 in the blink of an eye. But they, they saw the need for this and it was unanimous support. So congratulations and thank you for helping them. Yeah, it's a great, it's a great thing. It, you know, I think the foundation even wants to hire the, the new company to do a little project. Then they intend to pay them, of course, since it is an entrepreneurial endeavor. So you might go to chat Mr. Brown about that.
About that.
Oh, good.
Thank you, my mind.
Just wanted to announce that our student tech crew, which is up and running, they're, they've been in this training for a little bit now. But we have our first Dell certified repair person. Students has passed all these training classes, you know, as a daily. But it's first of five and we're really excited about it. The kids have already started, already started working out at the office and are helping students borrow and loan and helping teachers with minor smart board websites, those sort of things. And now they're, they're ready to start digging into the work of those puppies open and fix it. So I can't wait. They're going to teach me how to solder.
So when do they come and do this?
So they are using their free periods during the school day. So if they have a study hall or their lunch, they instead of go to those locations, come down to the student tech office. And so Serrance has been working with them to get through the training to make sure that they have basic knowledge and skill set. And that certification to me is like, oh my gosh, you're a little gold star to keep on your, on your lap. So the fact that we're what, six weeks into school and we already have a certified repair person. I just, when she told me that today, I was, I was in the bust. So very excited about that, but it is moving forward. And the students are very dedicated, like it's a small group and that was intentional and that's a good thing. You gotta get it rolling and, you know, it's overwhelming for everyone. But these, these five are, I think it's actually six. But they are coming down with every free chance they have. Some are coming down extra, they're helping out their friends. And I'm, I'm just, I'm really proud of them for taking the initiative so much on their own and also for Shannon for rolling with us. I've literally not been there once and I just get to tell you about it.
So that's open to students here at the middle school?
High school.
Is there any plan opened up to the kids in pre-k?
So it is really good. And our summer insurance is in place. We got, we are finally bonded. It took a few hurdles and fixed these with 40 standards apart. This is Jack.
He's one of the.
Congrats, Jack. Jack, congrats.
Sorry, I should have you speak about it.
What was the process like?
Basically it was going on this website called Tech Direct, which is like a thing that a lot of IT people use. I was assigned like a special course with a certification. I took the course, it was terribly long. There's a little test at the end of it. Pass that and you get a certification. And then you can start like repairing stuff like taking textbooks apart and fixing them.
Jack, what grade are you in?
Senior year.
May I say also, a lot of the comments we got today, not one, many of the comments we got today was how supportive the faculty feels regarding, they really, they, they talked quite a bit about that. And, and someone even mentioned like in the past, there are people that were comfortable with smart board from people that worked. And how that that's coming together really well and all to change the leadership.
And help the center take it. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I would just like to say Parkdale has usual, has a bunch of fall activities coming up. We had a wonderful fall festival. We have our, our Halloween parade on the 28th. A great Veterans Day celebration where we'll be inviting in the veterans on, on the 10th and having an assembly. And we really want to thank the board members for coming in. Not only were they excited about how tall you were or, or hearing that their voice matters. But they also got to hear from Mrs. McAttee's class, how valuable the board members are to our community. So thank you. I am going to invite Terry's daughter, which I have heard is an author. And we actually saw her book published in the library to our author. We do our author celebration. So look for her. Have your daughter look for an invitation. It would come. We'd love to have her. So thank you again for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you for hosting.
I'll go next. I just have a few things. One, want me to stand? To echo what Tahani said, we, there's, the middle school principals are an active group. We communicate a lot. And sometimes, not us, yeah, well, we communicate a lot too. And, and I can just tell you that not all places have the support that we have from our Board of Education. That you take the time out of your busy, busy schedules to come and spend the whole day with us. I just hope you know that you may find meaning in that. But I think the teachers, the support staff and everyone that, that had that opportunity to share with you what is really going on in these walls and how incredible this place is. And I just hope that you guys understand how important that is for us, for them as well. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Also, I did mention today, but I just wanted to reiterate, the, one of the issues we're having this year, like space, like Dan said, is our overwhelming amount of students who are just excited to be in school and want to participate in everything. I don't know the exact number. We're still running some of our clubs. But I can tell you a vast, vast majority of our students are in clubs, in their murals, they're doing something every day. And part of the problems we have is our classrooms aren't big enough for our clubs to take place. We have several clubs that there's 40, 50, 60 students in them. So we now have to break them off and meet in different chunks or meet in the multipurpose room and things like that. But I think that's just a testament to show how excited the teachers are, how passionate they are about, you know, meeting with the students, doing these extracurriculars and about how excited the students are to have those opportunities. The other thing I wanted to mention, like Tahani, we have a lot of special things going on. You may have seen some of the signs. Some of them are a little better than the others on the way up. The decades dance. There was a big poster making party. We have our decades dance on Friday where we're expecting a few hundred students at that. Grades five through eight where every grade level dresses in a different decade. And we're, we're just looking forward to this. The first dance that we've had this year is coming up this Friday. So Mr. Ly Brock and I are very excited about that.
What decade?
I don't know.
90s.
Last time I did like the full velour outfit and I was 80s like on AMC. So I don't know. We'll see. We'll see what happens.
Everyone's going to expect it. Pictures on your Instagram, school Instagram.
Yeah. You're going to have to talk to Mr. Ly Brock about that. That's all I have. Mr. Ly Brock, I know he's going to give an update as well.
So as you know, last Tuesday, we did have evacuation that resulted in an early dismissal. So just want to let you know, we've taken, I know you know the results of everything. The good news is everyone was safe. Everyone made it to where they, they needed to go. But we've taken it as an opportunity to reflect. So we've had multiple meetings. We've met as an administrative team. We've met as a, we met with our building crisis response team. We met with, just recently today with our building level safety team. And tomorrow will be the district level team that we will bounce our, our procedures off of. And we are confident in our, in our safety plan because everybody ended up being safe, but we're super confident in that. But it's also given us an opportunity to enhance our procedures. So we will be taking all the feedback from those committees and everyone that was involved in all the decisions, not just at the middle school, but also including administrators and staff of the other buildings as well to come up with a, a more robust plan than, than we already have. And the way I describe it is that we have a safety plan that keeps people safe. But once everybody's safe, it turns into a logistical plan. So really the, the, the changes, I shouldn't even say changes, the, the advancements and enhancements will come with our logistics. Because in a safety plan, it does not address where modified volleyball players that share a bus with Holland, they get picked up at 3:30 or supposed to go. So those are the types of things that we want to make sure that we can address if, if we are ever in that situation.
Thank you very much. Nice to know that we, we have the safety covered part, safety covered so that we can focus on the convenience piece.
I can't remember what Matt said at the high school. All of our clubs are on, up and running with a lot of involvement from the students. Back with that, I would say almost every kid is involved in something. And then our homecoming weekend was a huge success. Not just the dance. We had 470 kids at the dance, which is a lot of gift for the size of our school. And everyone had a great time. They were happy to be back, you know, to a normal homecoming dance and everything. But not just the dance, really the football game, our student section, I don't know if anyone was there for the homecoming game. Our student section was quite large and quite loud. Our powder puff game, pepperelli, just everything. The kids were so excited to be part of all of those events.
It was a cold night for that.
It was a cold day for that.
There were male cheerleaders who had no shirts on.
They were loving it.
Can I ask you a question? I forgot to mention that was, and before the game, there was a carnival, which I haven't seen before. And the carnival was really highly attended by the community. And that was really interesting to see all the ages there that were at the carnival. Ooh, I don't want to be around the carnival.
I want to say, did they do that last year? They started it last year, but it wasn't very big. But then this year, I don't know what made it, but there were a lot of community members. Parkdale kiddos were there.
I think it was Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, I believe it was just.
Because my son was, and I didn't get them in.
And all of the clubs had game booths and.
That was really shocking to see the number of people that were there.
Mrs. Sarias began that prior to COVID. She started putting that together with food. It started with just food trucks and then it really blossomed into a.
Right.
It has been.
But it was nice to see the different clubs having their games, like the Rocket Club had something. It was just nice to see that all the different organizations, the groups were out there. And they were so excited to show what, what their game was or what they were just really missed that.
And really the kids run a lot of that planning, even the advertisement the kids made. So it's a lot of their organization.
Thank you for, thank you for.
I'm just going to mention one more thing. The high school is the Rocket Club. We mentioned that. And so we mentioned that they finished in the top 25 in the country in this last season. And then they were out for an opportunity to work with NASA and we found out that they had better proof. So that proof is ready to move on. Again, Miss Science, she gets all these assignments. I go, I got a new assignment. So she's going to work with the Rocket Club to actually put in another grant to the foundation to support what, what's involved in it. And is actually very involved. They're going to work with NASA engineer. My understanding is create a rocket that can go 5,000 feet. That's, that's the goal. They're going to work as a team with other, yeah, that could go and work with other teams, not just our group. It is not a competition. It's actually a collaborative to create this rocket that will be able to meet these certain benchmarks or milestones. And so again, Mr. Wall is just looking into it and I'll be honest, it's really involved. So it's a bit overwhelming for him right now, but we want to get the support that he needs in terms of supplies and those kinds of things. So, and so we're going to be reaching out for another grant from the foundation. And we're just really excited for those kids and in D and T, they've been, students are emailing me directly because I've been asking them to work on a few small projects. And so again, they are being super proactive, I'll say, in the last two months. What the program has done is just really quite incredible, like the, the confidence that the students have and the interest and creativity. One of the parents at the communications committee meeting that we had yesterday, her daughter is involved and said she's decided to change her direction in college because of the book. And so it's, it's, it's really exciting. It's just getting started. But I think it's going to have a really, really programmatic impact there. So thank you for supporting that and thank you to the foundation for that 21,000, which is huge. Because it really provides us with a lot of that startup money that we were, we needed now, right? Again, we're developing this program. We knew we were going to need some money. And then they brought me the ticket. I'm like, holy cow, okay, let's, let's see if the foundation's interested in helping us out.
Just the kind of thing they're looking for is if something is innovative, something that hasn't been done before, where they can get, get it started. And, and then of course they expect the district one sees it take over. Because we don't have the resources to sustain a program over a longer period of time. But we do have the ability to get it started.
I'm going to try to get us back on course. This is an amazing day. We, we are all in discussion and learning mode because we've been in it all day and I'm so grateful for it. It's such a fantastic opportunity and also we have to get to the rest of the meeting. So anyone else have anything for the board? Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. Moving on to community comments, anyone who wishes to address the board, hopefully you have read our guidelines. We ask you to sign up and advance and keep your comments to three minutes apiece. Tracy Galuski.
So much, Erin. Throw my speech. I got two minutes, right? Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to meet again. Tracy Galuski, 144, Ry Brook Circle. I'm a freshman and a senior in high school for context. And I'm hosting two, I hosted, I wanted to speak about, I'm hosting one of the two exchange students that, that are at the high school this year. I want to take a moment to thank the school district as a whole for encouraging cultural experiences by accepting exchange students. My family's hosted five students over the years, two specifically for the full academic year here in East Aurora. And we've learned so much from the, as a family, from these experiences about the children and their culture and history of different parts of the world, particularly around intercultural communication. I'll just mention our Thai student, for example, Americans are very direct and she found it very odd putting at first because we tell and we command and we're bossy. And in Thailand, it's, it's a very different style. So you don't raise your hand, you don't ask questions to the teacher because that's perceived as an insult. Because if you ask your teacher a question publicly, they can shame them because it means they haven't taught the material correctly. So we had a lot of really interesting conversations around that and what that might mean in terms of our experiences here. I know it takes some additional effort to include these students in your program. And I'd like to acknowledge the work of the administration, the guidance counselors, teachers and the coaches who work with them. These students come here at different points in their education and have different needs in terms of their classes. The year abroad did not count for our Thai student, for example. She started as a junior, she, her in Thailand. And then she stopped the year and came here because the calendars don't, don't mesh very well. And then she had to go back. The day after she returned, she was back a junior, although all her friends were now seniors. So the entire time she was here, she was a junior, taking upper level classes as far as I'm concerned. And was still taking chemistry in Thailand at home with a tutor to make sure she was staying up and didn't fall behind in her studies back in Thailand. So the year doesn't come from any of them. Our student, our German student this year has a different experience where she's actually considered a junior here by age, but she's already graduated. So again, the courses she takes are not nearly as important as the experience and what she can share and take back to her home experience. Other students need specific courses or senior courses that are labeled senior courses so that they can take those back and graduate from their school. So again, they don't lose that year. So one size doesn't fit all. Each exchange student has individual requirements. And I'm hopeful that we can continue to find that balance between our school requirements and the home countries of these students so that we can meet their individual needs of each student based on their age and grade goals and certainly their country and culture requirements. I'd like to also encourage the school district to continue to leverage these experiences for all students. We know that our children will graduate and move into a very diverse and multicultural world. And learning to see issues from different perspectives and intercultural communication are key life and job skills. Climate change, social justice and immigration are global issues. And this generation will be expected to solve some of those issues.
Exchange students.
Oh my, I'll time. Okay, thank you. I'll email you that.
Please do. Thank you very much.
Stacy Brown. Yeah. Hi. Hi. So I'm actually host from Stacy Brown. Dolores Lola is actually one of our exchange students. We had kind of accomplice with schedules and things like that. She was able to come after practice. So she actually came here, she's from Spain. And we actually have had a lot of experiences, funny enough, some of the different things with culture and that are experiencing. But as funny as tonight, we went apple picking this week. If you don't do that in Spain, they just don't go apple picking. And so on top of that, tonight we're like, oh, we'll use those apples and make cookies for the meeting. So I actually, Lola's going to pass up some of those. In Spain, they don't use cinnamon. So I'm like making cookies and I'm like, what do you do with cinnamon? Like, how do you make apples? How do you do your apple pie? But then on top of that, she's like, yeah, today at school I was talking to the kids and they're just amazed that not everyone celebrates Halloween. So today she's talking to girls at school and they're just aggravated by the fact that, what do you mean? You don't go trick or treating? You don't celebrate Halloween? Like, it's just not, they don't do that in Spain. And then on top of that, currently Lola's playing field hockey. She, she was the game this week on the turf at the high school where we were there till almost 10 o'clock at night. Such a scheduling issues in the rain, playing field hockey. Oh, it was lovely. These trucks didn't have a chance. In the rain, in a cold 36 degrees. But these, these girls also, she's planning on this winter cheerleading. So she's planning on this winter cheerleading. They don't have cheerleading in Spain. So she's talking with her, her friends and they're just amazed by these things. So there's a lot of things which Lola's building her language skills up a ton. She came from northern Spain, so not as much as she's meeting the drinks, so just building language like crazy. She's my bedroom two months. But also just her exchanges, she, she said the other day, she had a conversation and I'm sure you can imagine teenagers conversing with English as second language. She's like, we had a conversation and we were back and forth and it was great, which is so huge. But just these incidental things, I think that the kids get from the culture exchange, which I have a son who's a freshman. So for him, it's huge and he's coming out of his shell like crazy. Mr. Brown will be super proud. It's, it's amazing. But just these exchanges that are incidental, which were also, Lola's actually talking to, to staff and that too. She's talking to like the Spanish teacher and that as hard work, we can offer and share because these kids do really want to share culture. So she's in, they're in the AFS club and Spanish teachers, you know, lead the AFS club currently. And the opportunity for, and maybe even other administrations to look into utilizing. So right now we currently have two exchange students. So Bobby and who, who has is from Germany and then Lola who's from Spain would love to share culture. So definitely hit up Mr. Ork or Mrs. Ferrars. I don't how to pronounce her. I'm sorry. But the Spanish teachers in the high school to, you know, find out how we can utilize these kids too, because there is an asset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. We are moving on to reports and discussion items. I'm so sorry. I didn't see, I didn't. Yep.
Becky Morning, Southwest. Blue Devil Design created here. Just wanted to share a little bit about some of those participating in that. He has an idea that he wants to develop and he wants to create custom fire pits. However, I don't think steel is going to be in budget. So if anyone knows of any crops of steel that he can use to create fire pits. The idea is that there'll be three sides that will fall the same. And then the fourth side, he will do on a plasma cutter at what he's got from the shoot prospect feature to take custom orders or perhaps a paint or a flag or like that. So just, you know, the Blue Devil design this year, he's really employed. Hopefully he can get his contract changed in a way, in a way. I have to say one thing about advertisement for the September 28th. The head tape, like two weeks choir, yes, it was the advertiser that advertised at September 28th. And it was also advertised, I have a picture of it on the sign out on the billboard. It was, it was taken on September 28th in the board's week that it was.
Thank you for your feedback. So we'll, we'll work on trying to. After Blue Devil signing, first thing I say, I know there's a community member who's some sort of same thing. Although you may want to reach out to Andrew Barber or Carter. Good idea. We can talk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving back on to item, I have a report to the test items, item A.
This is just the annual report on our summer curriculum activities. The last slide is looking forward to our professional development in the school year. It's directly tied to later on in the agenda. The professional learning plan for each, each school district that has a professional learning plan that has to be adopted by the board in October. But a lot of our future plans for this year are excited to be adopted to. So every year we have, I think this year I owe over a thousand hours to give out to all of the teachers. We went back the last couple of years, we were just being crazy. Everybody got 10 blanket hours. This year we went back to teachers requesting hours for certain projects with certain projects given priorities. So it was the review year for ELA, if you remember, they got all the textbooks, Spanish got all the textbooks. Math has a new year coming up. Priority was given to certain departments based on review years, new textbooks, restructuring of grade levels, teaching new courses. But just so you know, we can go back to the requesting of hours for certain projects. But Parkdale, the ELA math continue to work on their curriculum mapping at all grade levels to make sure that within a grade level, they're on a similar page and vertically the kids are getting the same experience. So when they move on to the next grade level and they're all mixed up again, they have similar experience with previous grade level. We offered our tech to Lisa Brown, offered several technology trainings for all levels. We had a healthy group of teachers attending the tech trainings. City Garden, already creating informative math and the LDA assessment tools to have common assessments. We had a lot of teachers, co-teachers, specialized teachers and geni teachers do some work on some coaching planning. Plan and organize the existing curriculum and supplemental materials across grade levels. And then fourth grade social studies really felt they were getting a little. There's a lot of new teachers in fourth grade. They want to make sure they're on track teaching the same social studies. Working on what they were done in the curriculum map together. At the middle school, the fifth grade team, we restructured it this year. So they spent a lot of time, because some of our teaching subjects they haven't taught in several years. And they wanted to make sure they're all on the same page. Again, technology training, work curriculum maps and resources. Some of the specialized teachers worked on some, we're doing some IEPs with schedules, more co-teacher training. And then new units for some ELA textbooks that Mr. McDonald, Mrs. Marklenger and the future community have adapted. At the high school, again, the ELA department had a whole new textbook series, nine through 12. They worked on aligning and implementing those. The Blue Devil design had several hours that helped develop scores to get started. Technology, special ed. A bunch of the science teachers worked to redo some of their science labs relating to the new science standards coming out. And Spanish teachers got a whole new set of text. They worked on those. And then. So I think I talked about this back when I gave the presentation in July. We had writer's workshop training, restorative practices, implementation team training, and I'm also happy to say the high school implementation team was just recently trained in October. They have an implementation team at each of the buildings. They're off to great cert, they have monthly meetings, and they're starting to test the message of what they, it is for short practices, it's being spread by the implementation team to the teachers. We had a cooperative training in August, you can see the numbers there, we're extraordinary. And then also for the co-teaching training, we got one in June, one in August, and then we're also able to offer some additional planning time. I think that's, it's time, nobody, you can't get more, more time. So being able to pay them to work together outside of their hours here together, they've been taking advantage of that. And then looking forward, we're just continuing to build on what we had started this past year. So we're continuing to build awareness and capacity around restorative practices. We have a half-day workshop on November 23rd planned for everybody, K through 12. The monthly, Tuesday, each building, they meet monthly to make sure we're on track. They have set of goals for themselves for the school year, and then I put high school training in here, although they did happen the last week, so they're, they're doing all of that also. So we'll continue as staff to build our knowledge around diversity, equity, and inclusivity, and what that means and looks like at these schools specifically. We had a full-day workshop on our last staff development day. We have a virtual culture of love series that throughout the school year. We brought Dr. Hunter back in, we worked, if you recall, we worked with the 712 ELA teachers last year, and he had spent a day with our 712 social studies teachers, and we have been discussing about how we wanna bring the message to more teachers such as Ella, specifically, we talked about elementary teachers, and what the culturally responsive sustain the education framework that this data come out with means and looks like to elementary teachers. Of course, we'll have our annual wellness day in March. Teachers are continuing to work on curriculum maps, common assessments. I'm offering a couple of book studies. I don't know why I do this stuff, I don't have time, but let's do a book, let's do four, we can run four different book studies this year. But kind of all ties into everything, all of our district goals. And it's just an additional opportunity. I hear a lot of teachers wanna do some professional reading, they just don't get time. So right now, I'm leading a tech like a pirate, a book by a different author, Teach Like a Pirate, I did in the, in the spring, we came in our opening day. There's another book called Tech Like a Pirate, focusing on how to use analogy to enhance your lessons, there's 31 teachers in that right now. I'm gonna do another one, Restorative Practices for Culture Management, in March, to kind of tie into Wellness Day in March. I'm gonna do an energy bus, just kind of hopefully rejuvenating book for teachers that are interested. And then I'm conscious by the school's one third standard here. For the 53 teachers that attended Kagan in August, I think we have another 10 going to Bosse's next week, just to continue to keep the ideas flowing and keep it at the forefront of their teaching, and to kind of bounce ideas off of each other. I'm planning three or four collaboration meetings per year each of the buildings, just so they can talk about, hey, what's worked for their, by building. So a high school, very best, you and a high school AP Calc teacher doesn't wanna hear how well a kindergarten teacher is doing. So we're doing a by-building. Hey, what's worked for you? What hasn't worked? How to modify this? Just to keep the momentum going around the cooperative learning structures. Writer's workshop, we have eight days with our trainer, we spread them out throughout the whole school year to keep that moving along. And then, like I mentioned early, earlier, the co-teaching, co-energizing for our parent and specialized teachers to keep the work together and build on what they learned in summer. So that's all I have. If we have any questions?
You were mentioned today at the buildings about how the teachers are so thankful for having an opportunity to give so much professional help, how much it marks to them, how much it is to them immensely, the, the co-teachers, landing time, to everything. I mean, they were really, really thankful for all the work that you're doing, all these professional development activities.
Wonderful. Yeah, I heard a lot of rejuvenating of the teachers.
I'm just gonna say, this is like really extraordinary. This is against any school district in our, in our region. The quality of the work on both the academic side and the social, cultural side is really exceptional. It's been really well received and attended by our teachers. The work of Kagan, the writer's workshop stuff academically is really good, powerful practices about, you know, what just the principals are doing is bringing it to all teachers. So there's common practice, common connections, that curriculum alignment, that mapping, all those pieces are really critical for solidifying programs. And like she's saying, she drives herself crazy because she does things like those book studies, but a lot of people participate, right? You have 33 people showing up for that first book study, right? And then the last one, you have more when you listen to the person.
Support advice.
Yeah, right, exactly, right. So she's not only leading the book study, but coordinating all the questions, and she's putting it out there and challenging the committee and all the cooperative conversations and collaborations that complement, the support of the directors, support of the principals, really, really, really exceptional. And this is gonna be stuff that's like three to five years of making.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it seems like a lot.
Yeah, it seems like a lot. It's what we're just starting in, and the way this is gonna stick is that you're gonna commit to this over a long period. So they're gonna take like, for instance, like the Kagan piece, we had a bunch of people attend Kagan, and I'm talking experienced people, people with 15, 20, and more years, any Kagan walking out, they're like, wow, that's fantastic. Because the cooperative learning strategies are so powerful and you need to be reminded of it. And so what it is, is there's a beginning, and then there's a middle and an end. And so we're gonna have, now we have 10 people attending during the year, and we're gonna have more people attending next month. And so the idea is that they're, you know, we don't force them, we have to volunteer for the seller part, but they're really interested, they're showing off, and we were fortunate to have the federal monies that's really helped to get this started so we could put it out. But this is really three to five years of making, and, and that's how professional development works. We want it to stick for the long term, it has to be consistent and repetitive, you know, it has to be in their base. Remember, this is important, here's the next step, and, and they're really doing a great job of teachers, very, very, and everything, because they're all working together. Co-teaching, co-planning, it's, again, another really big piece for our special ed students, and it's breaking wellness stuff, and with all the subversity, equity, restorative practices, it's really exciting.
Any other questions?
On the slide before this. Forty-eight teachers attended. So is there 48 teachers right now involved in co-teaching, or is there some going for that just for training? There's 48?
Yeah, just if you think like a genet and special. Yes, yes, genet and specialized teacher. We encourage them to come to the team if they could on that certain day, but the thing about the high school, there might be one specialized teacher, but they're co-teaching five different classes or four different classes, so right there.
With different genet.
Genet teachers, yeah.
Oh, okay.
More questions? Great, great. Thank you very much.
Moving on, it's very nice. We're not.
Mr. Coleman for Big So Patient.
Yes, we're tag teaming it tonight. But while she's connecting that, I just have to say, read your story about that little boy, it, it just, it touched it, my heart changed because that was a decision that we made over the summer to bring that class back. And that little boy, I know exactly, we were talking about, when I made the phone call to the parent, she was probably, she's like, this is like Christmas to me. I was like, oh. So it just makes me know that we're doing right, that that people are, yeah, love that. Yes, and I love to hear, he is so adorable, the whole class.
Yeah, they were great, I had a great time in that classroom.
Well, if you haven't visited the high school yet, we did. We had some of our students from our class at the middle school move up to the high school this year, so we do have a class that we started up there also, to make sure he visits that, because every time I go, it brings a smile to my face. But now we're here to talk about something else that's very exciting, and on your tour today, I needed to stop to, and we're actually able to see the new family support center. So we're going, is it the remote? No, just him. Okay. So you were able to actually see the space and see how it's been renovated from just a classroom, and again, we keep talking about how it's amazing, oh, I don't even, okay, how amazing our facilities was to get that space put together for us, so we could actually have a space to put behind the family support center. So the last slide shows our, here we go.
We worked together. Picture of this.
Just a band on the shelf.
Okay, it works. How do I go back though? Okay, so the slide that we just skipped over, yeah, it had our values and vision, and then it had the, the vision, the goal, and the process for our family support center. And just a few of the words in here that really support the district's values and vision, where it talks about collaborative partnerships, which leads to respectful relationships, strengthen the physical, social, emotional health of families, and remove barriers to student learning, which effective communication, continuous improvement, learning excellence. So really, when we were coming up with what we wanted the family support center to be, because there are a lot of different models out there, and Jamie spent a lot of time visiting and spent a lot of time talking about what the A's family support center was going to look like, and really what we came up with, if I were to boil it down in a long sentence, is just to say that it's going to be a collaborative relationship, it's going to help bridge the gap between school and the community to help remove those barriers for some families to learning for students. As I said, we're gonna tag team this, so to next slide, Jamie's gonna talk a little bit more about what the family support centers can actually go into.
So as Cindy was saying, really, we're talking about asset development, we're talking about strengthening community health resources. And so there are three major areas that most family support centers focus on. First being emergency assistance, so helping families who have human security, the pain assistance with, clothing, or housing, financial assistance. The next aid, mental health services, and so that we're looking in two different ways, linkage to agencies, private providers, and support groups, and then also something we're really excited about is bringing in resources into our family. We have two clinical staff working in the high school, and we're starting one of the middle school, one in Parkdale.
Next slide, before we go there though, I just wanna say, The Rock, you had on play therapy. We're really excited about partnering with The Rock to bring play therapy to Parkdale, so.
Yes, that's in the works.
So how does a child get to do that?
So this function basically adds like, their child to private therapist somewhere. Rather than having them go at five o'clock at night out to Lincolnville, they can go, their child is a therapist at school.
Yeah, that's developed over time, and it's, it's really.
Yeah, we kind of start two years earlier, the higher service. The third area is educational resources. This is where our partnering agencies help us with providing education. This can look a lot of different ways, supporting our special ed families, working on presentations for our parent speaker series, and then also doing some. And so here are some other ways that family support centers serve their community, so this is kind of ideas that we're thinking about, solution focused counseling. Some family support centers have their central registrar for their family support centers, it's kind of basically the same. Then homeless assistance, mentor, working with families with disability, establishing a network of support, just kind of say. Also developing a board of collaborative partners, and we've been, that's slotted off the partner that already established. But really, that is to get together, talk and brainstorm about what's going on in the community, and really talk about developing those assets, our health resources. Working to establish some connection with our home counseling department and enlarge community resources, and then also coordinating with other family support centers that are in our system. And so these are some of the collaborative agencies that we're working with. It's been a lot of fun doing this. There's, there's definitely, I think, a good mix of agencies there, and so we're, we're working with them on our parent speaker series, or getting involved.
All right, so we got a plan. We've got it up and running, we're ready to open for referrals, and we had our website turned on tomorrow, I believe, tomorrow's the day, so we're excited to see how this folds out. But, so where are we going? We've set some goals for ourselves for the family support center, and we're looking at like, within a month, getting the website up and running, starting an advertising campaign, getting the word out that we're there already, and, you know, come and, come see what we're all about. And we have other presentations scheduled with, with those, and things like that. Oh, faculty meetings, yes, we're meeting with all the faculty to inform all the faculty in the November faculty meetings. Solidifying the partnerships with the area agencies, as Jamie mentioned, we already have a big list already, but that collaborative board will help us to just all be on the same page. And begin assisting families, we've already had referrals, sort of informal referrals, where we have internal staff say, you know, I'm just noticing, would you please reach out? And so Jamie's actually already has 12 families that he's working with before we've even opened their doors. By the end of year one, we'd like to actually have that advisory committee in place where the community partners and JB and other admin would be able to meet on a regular basis just to talk about, you know, what needs are in the community, what needs are in the school, and how we can bridge those gaps. Develop and administer community need survey, just to get input from all of our stakeholders, and then expand the family support center, providing health and services. And then goals for year two, looking ahead even further, work to establish a, JB has it listed here as a special ed parent partnership, we're really looking to start a special ed PTO, where, but again, it has to be run by parents, it can't be run by a state district, but trying to bring families together to start something like that. A lot of other districts have it around us, and I think it's just another resource for parents to collaborate. Continue development of our current education opportunities and speaker series, working with our PTOs and with Jessica, and then work with community agencies to improve and streamline family access to services. And so our family's access to services slide.
So as some of you saw today, our, so full of people in the school, but the best way right now is to mail a phone, get on our website, it is live now, actually, and I could go do that, they're awesome. There is form on there too that you can fill out, and that automatically actually, I'm excited about, about that opportunity as well. Tool-based referral, we wanna go through our billing principles and our customer staff, we don't wanna replicate services, so we don't, and then also too, just wanted to note that we're using, you know, us as a, they're, they're a tech company that, that created a platform for, for us to use, and I would encourage you to, I would say, watch the video, they're awesome, and I'm excited about seeing that itself as well.
And thank you for your question, and the wellness of our families. If there are any questions, comments, or concerns.
One of these was mentioned yesterday, I think it was just, we had a few meeting, meeting place. It was mentioned that this support center is not just for East Aurora students that are in this school, it's for anyone in the East Aurora community, which was something that a lot of people in the community made not aware of.
We talked about like, how does that spread over time, right? Like, you know, initially, you, and Jamie, because, yeah, it's, we're not just reporting on this like from the ground up, that's true, you know, just reaching out to other districts. And we had a family support center a number of years ago, of course, the model was changed, you know, more responsive to, to the communities, and so they built this over the last few months, and so really appreciative of all the work you've done, everybody getting connected with all the partnerships that you've already created, and the opportunities that you've created, given to some of our. It was mentioned that this support center is not just for East Aurora students that are in this school. It's for anyone in the East Aurora community, um, which was something that a lot of people in the community made not aware of.
So we talked about like, how does that spread over time, right? Like, you know, initially you, and Jamie, because yeah, it's very not true to report me on this like wrong background, that's true, you know, just reaching out to other districts. And we had a family support center a number of years ago. Of course, the model has changed, you know, and more responsive to, to the communities. And so they built this over the last few months and so really appreciative of all the work you've done. Uh, everybody gets connected with all the partnerships that you've already created and the opportunities that you've created given to some of our families, you know, the soft opening. As people were noticing within this school, they may need to reach out to this family. See like they have some needs. And then so the next, over the next month, we're going to be going to the faculty meetings, making sure that our staff understands value and what this offers to our, for our community. Uh, and then there's like the internal community and then the external. And like, how do we go about like spreading that word? You know, it's going to take time, but I think you've got a really fantastic job of building something very proud. And once again, I think this is something that's going to grow and change as the needs of our community change. Right? And so it's going to be responsive and, you know, we're just kind of getting started. But I think, you know, been a really, really excellent job in pulling this off.
This is another one of those things that, what was it, February, when we started? And it was sort of like, where are we going? And we just kept narrowing it down and it's over.
And amazing, that job, it's just short. I mean, this is going to be so, so utilized because it's so well needed, especially coming off of COVID. Even before COVID, we were seeing social and emotional concerns that teachers had about students, issues with families. So this is going to be such an asset to our home service for. Thank you.
And you are live, it's working. Yay. It's up here, but yeah, so. Part of the webpage to explore.
Thank you very much. Thank you all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good, George.
Okay, I will be really grateful. I guess not as much, you know. Seems silly to report on what the auditors already reported on and then to report on July and August. So I'll just report on August. Uh, as of the end of August, we had $2.7 million in the bank and we had extended approximately seven percent of our budget. Um, we had received, isn't quite the right word, booked on 58% of our revenues on, in September. And, uh, obviously we booked our taxes as a receivable. So that's why the cash doesn't match. Revenues. And the other funds really don't run too much activity over the summer. So that's all I have on the general fund.
But the credits are back. And you're going to get two of them. And I realized I should have put better headings on them because they look the same. So one of them is all filled out. That's going to be the, the report of last year's period. So if you find out that we're in the top of the category, salaries, benefits, equipment. One only has one month worth. That's current one, we're not there yet. This is the, the wrap up of last year's ones. We're going to do that first. Um, and then we'll get over to the new one, just to kind of give us some of where we are. So long story short, um, at the end of last year, and this is a super, super summary of the audit brief, which was a summary of the audit phone book that all of you got. Uh, but it puts it all and just kind of lets you know where, where the year wrapped up. So as you can see, salaries came in slightly under budget. Benefits did come in over budget, but that was by design. Um, a lot of the grant funded positions, it was far less cumbersome to still pay benefits out of the general fund. So we didn't necessarily run over, uh, that was a purposeful decision and actually an efficiency decision. And efficiency decision, that would be an efficiency decision to make that happen. So, and that's just for accounting purposes and the rest. You're going to see equipment came in slightly, uh, under budget, but some of that's due to an encumbrance. I'm going to get there in just a second. Supplies, again, slightly under budget, uh, contractual slightly over budget. Textbooks off or tuition, under budget, BOSI significantly under budget. And again, some of that is, you know, those classes that we were bringing back on, we took on expenses, bringing back some of our eight one one classes and so. It's not as black and white as black and white may lead it to believe, but that's kind of where, well, hold on, you're a little high in salaries, but a little low in BOSIs. Yeah, in the wash, it's not, you know, it wasn't bad budgeting, it was actually good practice. Um, and the same for transportation and knowing, you know, the gas prices that we all lived through a full ass year coming under budget on transportation, um, that's a win. So overall, in terms of money that we can choose to spend, we came in about $400,000 under budget. Remember negatives are good on the top, on the bottom negatives are bad and positives are good. Um, you're going to see we came in significantly over budget, but that was basically due to sales tax. And that's where all of that is, that half million dollars. That was a surprise, uh, an unforecasted surprise, becoming reopened and spending kicked back up. We are not anticipating to have budgeted a half million dollars under budget. So again, each year I come to you and say, hey, we were able to pull a rabbit from this hat with them on it. We then move to another hat, pull the rabbit, we then move to another hat. There's not an endless supply of hats, right? There is a, a endless supply of creativity and we're treating everything we can. But just because the last three or so years, we've been able to kind of find one bit not correct, doesn't mean there will always be one there. So I just don't want to intrude into that. Um, but ultimately, uh, things we can spend, we came in 407 under budget. Money we received, we came in about $540,000 over budget, bringing us to about $950,000 to the good when all is said and done. There are some notes to that, so those next few columns, that's new to this sheet. And that just highlights some of that stuff, that $70,000 in equipment savings. Bulk of that, the 60 of that 70, um, was the, and we tracked that, we didn't receive until after July 1st. So that was 60 of that suddenly was already spent, but for accounting purposes it wasn't, but then it was. So that was really $10,000 on the top, but, you know. Um, you're going to see the unappropriate fund balance. We, we were able to slide 72,000 into that, bringing us to the state cap of 4%. So we are fully flush in our, um, our 4% carryover that we're allowed, um, not over, not a penny under. We did reserve $461,000 for the, um, appropriated fund balance, which is basically money used to balance this year's budget. And that's something we've paid every year. But remember the first $460,000 in savings is actually in for next year's budget. That's a, it's a purposeful budgeting technique, um, leaving us a balance of about $359,000 to fund reserves. And what you acted on today is that we split that fund equally between the capital reserve and the repair reserve, um, going from there. The final cash out of the three-year money. And again, we work on an academic calendar, the Fed and the money doesn't necessarily flow. So we know it's a three-year thing. It's not as linear as year one, year two, year three. It just kind of comes and goes as it comes and goes. But just to give you a sense, we've received about, um, $480,000. We've spent about $497,000. So we're more or less in balance. And some of that, again, was an accounting function of June 30th and July 1st being various clear deadlines in terms of that. Um, and the rest of the money, the staffing wound up on the next page, the staffing wound up, um, exactly where we left it. And the funding of the balance, this, this final column is, no, it's not, it's on the sheet, nevermind. That's the same column we saw. Now we're going to move over to our new sheet, uh, which looks a lot like the old sheet and does not have a better heading. And I apologize. Um, but we're going to start on top. What you're going to see there is the actual fin- final budget, which is the budget all of you voted on. Um, starting with salaries and then go from there. Um, the zero dollars, and, and again, this is kind of anticipated realized savings. We're so early in the year that zero dollars basically means people leave, we're on track. We are still figuring out what we can charge to grants, what we're paid for. It's just too early to forget. Um, really by October, this just kind of lets you know, um, answering Dan's question, we're not spending money. We haven't allocated, but we're also way too soon to realize savings. But the good news is we're not anticipating that we're over budget already. Like, that's the only thing you'd see this early in the year. Um, the same as benefits, we're still enrolling people, the healthcare enrollment window and then getting those bills. All the new hires who needs healthcare, who needs single opening, family, all of that is still reconciling. Um, equipment, the same, supplies, some of the anticipated expenses are coming in a little under budget. Again, super early, I wouldn't be excited by that. Um, but the good news is it's not over, like, that's literally all you're looking for at this point. Contractual textbook, uh, BOSIs, BOSIs have a brand new system. Um, the system is not fully onboard yet, so we've actually got no communication to BOSIs. And now we always wait for that first big BOSI bill to drop. The zero doesn't mean anything either way. It simply means their system hasn't caught up to the, to the school district. Yeah, so again, no news, there's no news. That's, 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 I mean, good. Um, transportation, we've only received one bill, but it is trending to be slightly under budget. So, all right, we'll take it. Um, but that's like scoring, you know, a field goal in the first minute of the game. It doesn't mean you're going to win the game, but it doesn't mean you're losing either, so we'll take it. Um, we will have to watch that debt service transfer with no universal feeding. We are going to have to watch how some of that funding. As the auditor says, you know, we realized a lot in savings because of the reimbursement of the universal feeding. As we try and maintain the level of feeding that we are doing in terms of quantity and variety. Um, versus using the resources we have, but also building sustainably. Like you mentioned, it's going to be a fluid fund simply because we had two years of universal feeding, which wasn't necessarily free, but the Fed's paid us, as I was speaking, so there. Um, property tax item, we, we are trending slightly higher. Here in County Sales Tax, we've got one payment. Um, it is, if we project it out, it looked to be slightly over budget. But I want to be very careful again, last year we saved, you know, we came in $500,000. There is no belief that we'll come in $500,000. Um, so again, don't think that that's only going to multiply or grow exponentially. First bill was a little higher than we expected, but there's a lot of game left to play here. Um, so just because that's the rabbit we pulled out of the hat last year doesn't mean it's either this year. Again, we more or less, we think we're $10,000 to the good on one side. We think we're $22,000 to the good on the other side. But by October, it doesn't, doesn't mean a lot, other than it means we're not in a terrible trouble already, which is all you've been wanting here for me right now. Um, COVID funds received and spent, that continues to come in. Uh, the fund balances there, the unappropriate fund balance reserves. Something that you're going to be interested in on the next page is the staffing. Um, there is one question I want to give you there on, on, I have to figure out exactly how I counted, who I counted this district, who I counted the special ed last year. So you're going to see a drop in district and an increase in special ed. I got to dig a little deeper, some of those may offset. Um, some of that is, um, the new eight one ones that we have, integrated special ed that we have, or the integrated pre-K. Some of those new teacher hires are the pre-K teachers in and of themselves. So again, you're going to see we're up. Um, but again, some of that up is pre-K, which is federally funded. Some of that up is bringing back the BOSI's classes as well. So it's not like we just willy-nilly added all these teachers. There's up and offsets for some of this. Um, we just believe we can do it here on campus better for some of these. So it is a jumped in number of belly buttons that we have, but it's not just pure extra money that we're spending, that there is some nuance to all of that. Um, again, you'll see with teacher aides, again, slightly up. Some of that is special ed and student driven, some of that is pre-K driven. It's just the nature of the beast, slightly up in, uh, we have those technicians that bumped up the B and G and that rounds out our team, managerial confidential stays the same. And then on the bottom, all of the columns, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, that's all stuff you've seen before. The gray 22 column, that's new and that brings in fund balance through June 30th last year. So, um, what the auditors did in a phone book, I did a. Say that. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. I'd be, uh, looking at the June 30th reports. So as I'm excited, you look at state aid, it looks like state aid basically. In the, or 130,000, the thing you look. Lottery aid, the BLT lottery grants, gaming. To me, it looks like the money from lottery just supplanted some of the general, the general aid. Just, um, you'd think that the lottery aid and the BLT and gaming would, would add rather.
No, they don't, they supplant.
They just supplant.
It's part of our.
Yeah. It's part of the process.
When they said the lottery.
It's all in there.
The lottery money goes to education, but then they take away the money.
They call it lottery, right?
For the lottery.
Yeah, I have accepts, but, uh, just look at the numbers lottery aid. Oh, that's the 1.8 million and then the BLT and gaming. Well, it's interesting, state liability really does sets up the bread houses.
Right.
It's a, supplanting part of that.
I agree.
But especially when they bill it as lottery funds education. Because, because they've taken the money that they were giving you, give you lottery money and then take the other money back.
It shows up on the revenue report that way.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Uh, I'm 11, there any legislation to come before the board?
Item four, I neglected to back end visitor comments. I neglected to, uh, point out that we had four folks communicate with us, give an email to the district. Um, Sidney, Reese, Billy, Bravo, Rebecca O'Connor, and an unnamed Patrick who all received those.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item 12, consensus item requiring board action. Is there anyone who wishes to remove the site? I'm not going to have motion to approve items. Approved by Mrs. Daniel. All those in favor? Proposed of sanctions carried 70. We're moving on to item 13. Thank you all for your deep dive, heavy reading and making this remember ready. Item A, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education to perform a first reading to adopt policies listed in your agenda. These are the new section 1,000 policies. A motion to approve the first reading. By Mr. Cassidy, seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Um, Mr. Manfredi, you want to cover anything here?
Just in, in general, just for public consumption, but also just to clarify the answer. So our goal as policy committee, rather than tweaks and changes and edits, we're taking the BOSI's best practice, we're taking our current policy and we're making. I don't want to call it a new policy, but we are going to call it new policies. It doesn't mean throughout the old. Um, but rather than making edits to existing policies, it got very cumbersome very quick. So what we're going to try and do is hopefully a thousand amount, and that doesn't mean a thousand, I mean thousands sections. Um, we're going to, to, to pull out the old, for example, 1,000s and just drop in new 1,000s. So otherwise, we don't have to track changes of this or that. Uh, but we are taking our existing manual, we are taking the BOSI's best practice manual. We're making these to our friend base. But then we were having a lot of trouble making sure the right version was up when, when there were minor wording changes. So rather than that, we're deciding just out with the old, in with the new. Even though the new isn't completely new, it just suits the whole process cleaner, it was the editing and updating. So you will see large chunks like this. The goal is we're going to go through the entire manual this year. Um, hopefully a thousand a month is, is our ambitious goal. Um, and that's going to get us in a really good spot. But there is, again, as you read deeper into it, sometimes there's changes, things that are in our 1,000s actually belong in the 2,000s according to the BOSIs and the rest. So the goal is to go through it once. Um, it's already compliant for this, to make it as best practice as possible. And then once we have kind of that one set, next year, do it again. But it'll be a lot less work because then we just kind of tweak it into buying, tuning the rest of that stuff. So it is an ambitious two-year project. 90% of the work will be done this year. The other 10% will be as we do this whole process again next year. Uh, but that work seems to be a lot less glorious. And then from there, we're going to be, uh, district people call when they want to see the best practice.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi. I would like to point out that the dropping in new sounds easy, but we all know that Mr. Manfredi has gone through every single policy and compared our previous policy or policies that tie to the BOSIs and then pulls those together to the new form that's under review by the committee. And that brought it all to a first reading. So the drop in sounds easy, but you know, that's a heck of a lot of work on your end. And thank you very much for that.
That's exactly what I wanted to point out, is that he makes it sound so simple. And the plan is, is going to make this so much easier, but it's not simple. And, and Mr. Manfredi put so much effort into making our job so much easier by, by being out there and helping us to get past the many Moses's, right? That had written prior policies.
Internal policy jokes. It's not funny, even if you understand.
No. But, uh, but no.
You got to be honest.
It, the, the work that he has done on behalf of the, the policy, it's just, we, I can't say enough. It, it has really made our job so much easier.
Any other discussion on the, the 1,000? New 1,000? All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed of section carried 70. Item B, superintendent recommends the Board of Education to perform a first reading to retire entirety of the current section 1,000s of the current policy ma- manual as detailed in your agenda. Further, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education to perform a first reading to retire the additional two policies outside of that, uh, weapons in school and gun-free schools. I have a motion.
So much.
Oh, from Mrs. Daniel, seconded by Mr. Cassidy.
For just a point, but we're removing those because we already have a new policy that says so. So we're not getting rid of policy.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Yeah. All the, all the covers of the policies that we're removing are already covered. All the all the covers of the policies that we're removing are already covered elsewhere. Again, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor?
All right, thanks.
Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. Congratulations.
My first house.
First house.
7,000.
There you go. Thanks.
Keep clapping that mouth. Item D, the Superintendent Recommended Board of Education Approve the Graphic Novel March Book 2 as detailed in your agenda. Who's by Miss Soiler?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Proto, session. All of the favor? Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. Item D, the Superintendent Recommends the Board of Education Approve the 2022-2023 Professional Learning Plan. A motion. Moved by Mrs. Soiler, seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. Item E, the Superintendent Recommends the Board of Education Accept the 2021-2022 Internal Audit as presented by the Internal Audit Committee. Details in your attachment. A motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Flowers, seconded by Mr. Brunson, discussion.
Yes. He has not made that presentation formally, but just live committee says, of course, some of the things that come up when we've had weeks. We have read it. So again, it's fine. I mean, it's a positive. Usually, there's no problem proving it out of this form of presentation. Mr. Lynch, is that correct?
Yes, I'm sure at some time when he's available, he will be happy to come to the board and answer.
Thank you for
Maybe that was a part of the audit that presented tonight. I'm going to see that so far.
And the previous internal audit pointed out a few items that needed some attention. They were taken care of. So the
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. Item F, the Superintendent Recommends Board of Education Accept the Internal Audit Correct Action Plan as detailed in your attachment.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Flowers, seconded by Mr. Brunson, discussion. All of the favor? Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. Item G, the Superintendent Recommends the Board of Education Approve the $100,000 Capital Outlet 2022-2023 Contract Between the District and Young and Gray Architecture as detailed in the attachment. I have a motion. Moved by Miss Soiler. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. The Superintendent Recommends the Board of Education Approve the Prime Contract for the Middle School Emergency Cover Project as detailed in your agenda. Moved by Miss Soiler. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. All those, oh, sorry, discussion. All those in favor? I oppose, abstentions, period 7-0. Item I, the Superintendent Recommends the Board of Education Approve the Resolution Issuring the Secret Negative Declaration of Post-Capital Improvement Project as detailed in your agenda. Moved by Miss Soiler. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. Item J.
That's a lot of pages for one.
Superintendent Recommends the Board of Education Approve the Resolution to Resolution as to a special meeting and vote for the East Aurora Union Free School District on December 14, 2022, as detailed in your agenda. Moved by Miss Soiler. Seconded by Mr. Proto, discussion. Is that a date?
Yes, it's the day that it's on the it's the day we're approving the vote that is December 14.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. Item K, the Superintendent Recommends the Board of Education Approve the Agreements Between the East Aurora Union Public Service and the Villas Beach Aurora for the Part-Time SRO Part-Time SRO Services as detailed in your agenda. Have a motion. Mrs. Soiler. Right, so, second. Seconded by Miss Daniel, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, period 7-0. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is November 16. However, the public, public forum, community forum for the Capital Improvement Project will be Tuesday, November 1st, in the middle school cafeteria. Where their meetings are outlined. The vote is on your agenda and yeah, with some ratings. For board members, we'll be attending this convention. So if that's what's going next, is there any other business to come forward?
Let me just say that, maybe I missed it, but I just want to I don't know, maybe.
No, that's
Just so we all have it. Whatever.
Sure.
Thank you.
Tuesdays.
Right, right. It's just
Yeah, please, please make sure we
There's also one in December, too, December 7. We want to make sure we get a Google invitation.
Thanks. Take it on our phones. Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn. Moved by Miss Soiler. Seconded by everybody, Miss Daniel.